It is six o'clock and I will call the April 23rd, 2024 meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor Hugh Matlack from the Anchor of Hope and Galena Presbyterian Churches to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you all for inviting me again. It's appreciated. I was reading through Galatians, Paul's letter to the church there. He had a kind of contentious relationship to that church. And I thought, sometimes I see that going on around us, and I know that it's important for us to find ways past that. He has some advice for the Galatians and also for us. God's Spirit makes us happy, loving, peaceful, patient, kind, good, faithful, gentle, and self-controlled. There's no law against behaving in any of these ways. Because we belong to Christ Jesus, we have killed our selfish feelings and desires. God's Spirit has given us life, and so we should follow the Spirit. That's how our hands. Gracious God, of all places, including our place, of all people, including our people, of all things made and unmade, seen and unseen, your world and our world around us, we seek your holy presence and welcome, your loving care. Be with and protect all of our neighbors, keep our children and youth in safety and learning. May your hand be upon all who serve, first responders, law enforcement, firefighters, educators, medical personnel, elected officials, staff who work for the benefit of all our citizens. Help us to remember how we can keep our eyes on you, oh Lord, while also being friends one to another regardless. We offer to you what you deserve on a wavering devotion. You offer to the world you have made good, but you have commanded us to be good stewards. Lay your spirit upon this meeting this evening to fulfill duty and practice excellent virtue. And when we go our ways from this place, may we go in safety. In Christ's name you pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is Citizens Time. As always, I will call you up and you'll have three minutes to speak. Mr. Cook will keep the time. The first person we have signed up is Ms. Dreama Johnston.
Hello, y'all doing all right?
Good, ma'am.
Members of the board, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to y'all tonight about some exciting things that are going on in our area, the eastern end of the county's public. My name is Dreama Johnston. I am the president of a newly chartered Byron Springs Community Rivalry Club. Our goal, much like yours, is to maintain our community in the best way possible. We would like to do that by constructing and sustaining a community center in Byron Springs. Some of the benefits of this space to gather and unite and provide volunteer opportunities and support projects, combat loneliness, promote healthy living, positively impact all the members in our community, especially the younger generation. We need the help and the support of you, our leaders of the county, to make our vision come to life. While our club is new, our members are motivated and up to the challenge. We want to make sure the place that we live, work, and play can be adequately promoted community involvement by building relationships. What better way to do that with a community center? With the opportunities for all citizens to feel connected regardless of age or whatever you are, we look forward to your input on the best ways to look forward and fund a community center in Byron Springs. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Johnston.
Thank you.
All right. The next person we have signed up is Ms. Gina Dunford Harper.
As most of you know, my name is Gina Dunford Harper, and I am the Ivanhoe Parade Director. Later on this afternoon, y'all will be voting on the Ivanhoe Parade. The reason being is last year, we had a complaint. A gentleman said that he felt that his family was in danger for the parade lineup, that emergency services wouldn't be able to get to his family if something was to happen. We have our lineup for less than an hour. I then keep the road where traffic can come through. Most of you know because some of you are in my parade every time. I don't understand his concern because we have fire, rescue, police, I have nurses, and if that can help, and I have at least five churches in representation. If that was an emergency, we would easily be able to have somebody there. And it has been suggested that we move the parade to the next row. I feel that if I did that right now, I have the use of a field that is owned by Mr. Bob Sangster, and I use that field for my walkers, for my motorcycles, my four-wheelers, the floats pull in there and get fixed up, my shriners are in there, the wagon train is in there. So I think right now, the way it is, is the safest route that we can go. If I moved to the other route, the children, the elderly, the senior citizens that like to walk and stuff, we'd just be randomly out in the road and would not have, you know, it would be hard to control that situation. Whereas right now, I have everybody in the field. We thank y'all, and I'd just like to leave my speech to one thing. Petrie, Ivanhoe, July 4th, 2024, and you are in my parade. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. And the next person we have signed up is Ms. Amy Dunford Funk.
I work with Gina to do the Ivanhoe parades. I'm the one that submits the paperwork and gets our permits and let Gina do the dealing with the public. But I wanted to share with y'all that our parade is very important to the Ivanhoe community. I know for a fact that we have people from Tennessee, North Carolina, and South Florida that come to our parades. And a lot of times, our parade is like a reunion, a homecoming for people. We have our parade 4th of July at four o'clock. We have it this Saturday after Thanksgiving. So a lot of people come in to Ivanhoe to see their family, and they look forward to that parade. And we start getting phone calls, get June, sometimes the end of May. People want to know what time's the parade. We always say four o'clock. They want to know when the parade is, so they put their grandchild or everybody with it. And we always try to honor somebody from the community, either somebody living that does work, or if we have a community member that passes, we'll take and put that family as the grand marshal, so we can honor that family member that we've lost from Ivanhoe. And 35 years ago, when I was attending Whitfield College, I took a history class, and it was taught by Dr. Helen Lewis. And we compiled research for her book. The book was titled, "It Comes From the People: Community Development and Local Theology." And in that book, I'm quoted as saying back then, "Parade, big deal." You might say, "Big deal," but for a lot of people, parade brings community together. And for Ivanhoe, a parade is a big deal. And I hope you can vote for us to have this parade. It is very important for the community. And it's funny, the gentleman that complained, before we knew who he was, we had saw him and his daughter walking down the road on a Sunday, and it was before 4th of July because I wasn't able to be a part of that parade. My mother-in-law passed, and I couldn't go to that one. But it was before that parade. We didn't know who the man was. We just see a man with a child on a bike on the road. And Gina pulls over, and she says, "Excuse me, sir." She says, "We have a 4th of July parade at four o'clock. We'd like for y'all to be in our parade." And then he goes to say that he doesn't like who we line up. But we didn't know who he is. And I would tell him, if he was standing here today, we would invite him and his daughter to be a part of our parade because we think it's important for our community. But thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all the citizens we have signed up, so I'll close Citizens Time. Mr. Barrett, before we move on with the agenda, I know it's under your report. Do you want to take up the Ivanhoe Parade if I don't hear any objection from any board member while Ms. Dunford Harper and Ms. Funk are here?
Absolutely not. If you are, no objection, we can go ahead and go to that. It's page 124 of your agenda. I will comment. I put this on the agenda just for the board to take action on due to the concern that was raised last year. Sheriff Foster is not here, but I did speak with Sheriff Foster a week or two ago about this. He is aware of the concern. He is aware of making certain that they keep the road open through there, and they will do all the things they do to help work with them, Ms. Funk and Ms. Harper, on getting the parade lineup and trying to remedy the concerns there. So my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, would be for the board to authorize the county administrator to assign this. If there's any recommendations, comments, revisions you all have, there is a place for me to include those comments if you all deem it necessary to do so.
I might go to motion. Sir? I might go to motion. Sir? I have a motion by Mr. Burnett. I have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion about the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one comment. I've participated in the parade several times, and on Bluebird Lane, we try to keep everybody to the left next to Mr. Sangster's property. Other members of the board's been there as well, so there is egress to and from any residents that's on the right side of that lane.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure I threw that out there.
Well, and to Ms. Gina's credit, you know, I've also been at the Ivanhoe Parade several times over the past 20-plus years. And if I'm ever having an emergency and I live down there, that's the time I want to have it.
You got that right.
So I'm not sure what the concern is, but... All right. Does anybody else have anything to add? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
So approved. Thank you, ladies. And y'all are more than welcome to stay, but...
I appreciate that. She worked for her. But I did want to say, "Oh, y'all." It doesn't matter what she did.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the payment of invoices. Each board member has received in their board packet a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. In addition, we've also received a memo from our finance director, Ms. Kelly Wood, requesting that we add a check into the accounts payable that was delayed by the post office. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the payment of invoices with the addition of the additional check as requested by Ms. Woods. All right. I have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second. I have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions, discussion, or any invoice that any board member would like to pull out? All right. Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
So approved. Next item on our agenda is approval from the minutes of our previous meeting from April the 9th, 2024. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. I have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Moving to old business, we have the VDOT six-year plan. Mr. Barrett?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You all have agreed to set a public hearing for the VDOT six-year plan. But Mr. Burnett has a request for you all to consider. And on page 43, I guess, 42, 43 of your plan, 43 of your plan, is Foster Falls Road. It is a .1-mile section from the intersection of Hilli Haven Road to 2726 Foster Falls Road. And Mr. Burnett, I'll turn the floor over to you there.
So the family reached out to me, and that being put to be hard surface. And they reached out and asked if they could have that removed after their mother passed And I told them I'd look into it, and I don't see no problem at VDOT. You know, I reached out to Mr. Barrett, reached out to VDOT, see if there'd be any issue with that. And then the funds would go back in. I'm assuming the funds would go back into the...
Correct. There's no other house between the Hilli Haven and the 2726. The owners had said they had requested it to get it to their mothers' or grandmother's house. And since she had passed away, they weren't as interested in it. So the recommendation would be to just recommend taking this road off so the advertisement would reflect this road no longer being on the six-year plan. And I would request that you would make a motion to do such.
I'll make that a motion. All right. I have a motion to remove that section of road off the six-year plan. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Morgan. Is there any questions or discussion on that?
And Mr. Chairman, and that is just to remove it for the advertising purposes. If citizens come and want to leave it on there, then we can just leave it on there. But any leftover funds, you're correct, will go to that last road. So thank you.
All right. Does that elicit any questions? All right. Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? So approved. Anything else under old business, Mr. Barrett?
I do not have anything, sir.
All right. We'll move into reports. We have a treasurer report. Ms. Gwynn?
Good evening. Good evening. Okay. In your board packet for this meeting, you had your financial report for the month of March. And you will see on the, actually, it'll be in the third page of that packet, number page two, the total funds that we had on hand at the end of March totaled $83,031,200. Included in that balance is the general fund balance, which is at $53,550,511. And that's through the end of March, again, for three quarters of the fiscal year at this point in time. So any questions on anything that's included within the financial report that you'd like me to address?
I don't think so.
All right. So moving on, just a few little tidbits. As I mentioned, since this was the end of March, for the first, really, the first full quarter that we've had to be able to really address our tax collections and things like that, because real estate, or excuse me, personal property was due in December, so we did have that at the end of the second quarter of the fiscal year. But with real estate not going out until right at the end of December, it was hard to really do any reporting at the end of December for the most part. So as of the end of March, our real estate collections, just on real estate taxes, is at 91% of what we bill, including, or excuse me, including public service court. That elevates that level just a little bit to almost 95%. So real estate collections are really good considering that they did come out later. So I'm very pleased with that at this point in time. Personal property, which always lags behind, right now with personal property, our collection is at 89%. And that's overall, which includes personal property taxes, machine tools, mobile homes, purchase capital, all those other categories that you see listed on an individual basis within the budget there for the report. So all in all, we're not in too bad shape. Personal property is, like I said, one of those things that lags behind. It just kind of moves. But we are getting ready to hopefully be able to get delinquent notices out for the end of this month. Not really sure if the pieces are going to fall together in the next day or two to get that done. If not, that may get delayed to the end of May for those to go out for the 1st of June. So we'll be sending those delinquent notices out, and we're just continuing on. Things have slowed to allow us to catch a break in the office and work on some other things, so we'll be picking up on other collection methods as well at this point. So overall, just want to give you all that bit of information regarding taxes at this point in time. So any other questions or any...
Can we get something done and start working on the two tax dates separating the personal property and the real estate?
That's been discussed, and that's actually a board decision. So I think the last discussion we had, the commissioner had indicated that I think there would be a little bit of difficulty trying to split those dates, but we also had discussion of, since the commissioner's coming in new with a new staff, to allow at least one tax year billing cycle to go through before looking at splitting those. But beyond that, I guess discussion really just probably needs to continue because it's probably a decision that sort of needs to start being made at this point to move into the 2025 calendar year for those bills.
And Mr. Barrett, off the top of my head, if I went back through my notes, I can't remember what there was. Seems like there was maybe one was better to split than the other one.
Yeah. I had thought personal property was going to be easier, but I was wrong. Personal property, after talking to the ones that do it, personal property is harder to back up earlier in the process. And real estate was one that we talked about potentially could be. We set the tax rate early, and they tried to do the books early. Real estate could be backed up earlier in the year, or we could move it out in the process. But the discussion was due to that issue, because we also thought personal property might be the easy one to, you know, going off the assumption, we get the tax values on vehicles, and we could start working on that. But that doesn't include all the business, personal property, and everything else that comes in that they work in May and June. So the last recommendation was to look at leaving this year the same, give Adam a chance to get his crew acclimated to it, and then see if his crew could get it done in time that the real estate could go out earlier in the future.
I guess I was misunderstood because I thought Mr....
Smith.
James, it's Mr. Smith.
I thought he talked about...
That's me every two weeks. I'm not even going to laugh. Had said something about we didn't want to have that backup like we did this year where, you know, and I thought, I mean, I thought we were kind of going to try to do something this year to prevent that from happening, whether it was change the dates or whatever. I just wanted to make sure we're thinking ahead and not going to have that big backup like we did where people are sitting around. We have to make changes.
And that's what we are trying to do. They have done, Matt's arranged already, they've done some vision training and some things like that for the Commissioner of Revenue on that side. I still am hoping that we are able to work a test real estate batch, for lack of a better term. The Commissioner and the treasurer plan on working with IT like in April or May or whenever they can to try to do a test real estate batch, just to see if everything is working, to try to eliminate the problems that we had last year, and also to give the commissioners...
And the year before.
Yes, to give commissioners an opportunity to work.
Every year, right.
I'm hoping, kind of, and really, it's a multitude of things. As Mr. Barrett mentioned, we're hoping to go through a test bill run for real estate because that's where our issues have been. But with that, and having reassessment the other year with a software change, the Commissioner's office did have struggles there. So I think getting the new group introduced to Vision and giving them the opportunity to learn that program and know more about it, I think that'll help on that side. So hopefully, the kinks that we've had have gotten worked out. There were a few things that, when the file comes over to our side, that we have to do a few things on before we send it back to the Commissioner's office. Those things, we had some issues which led to the previous commissioner and her staff having to enter a lot of transactions in manually. And those were primarily for our citizens that qualify for the agent income credit and the veterans credits, whether it was a full credit or a partial credit, real estate and personal property both. They had to enter all of those in manually. Normally, that's a process that when the file comes to us or our office, we go through a little process, in a few minutes, it posts everything. So I've been working with Munus on several other issues that have come up on various things. And so I got a guy on one day, fresh blood for me, when I called Munus support. So I hit him hard with everything that I had that I had not gotten answers on before. So when I had asked this fella about a few things, I was very pleased with him because he dug deeper into my question. And from what he has seen, the problems that we had in being able to apply those credits have been corrected, and it should work properly. So with that, that eliminates a good week, week and a half of having to learn in all these other transactions for the Commissioner's office. So as long as that will work, and then everything else kind of falls into place. But I am hoping we get to do a test bill run, idealistically by about May, which I know is going to be here in a week and a half. No later than early June because by August, Commissioner's office really needs to be starting the process of closing out the books by about the middle of August in order for both of our offices to get through everything, get the bills to the printers, that the bills are back out to all of us by early October. So it's about a good month and a half process at least. So that's where we're at on timing. And that takes us back to the discussion of changing the tax due dates because when you look at what date you set for the due date and how soon before that you want the bills to go out, and then you back that up another 45 days, that's where that can put the offices in the jam, especially the Commissioner's office, in trying to get the books closed out. So that's kind of another part of our discussion, too. But as I've mentioned before, folks are still coming in and saying, "I wish you all would change these due dates. I like this bill coming out later. Even though I don't get to pay in the target my tax refund, I like the bill coming out later." So even though it's been craziness for us and for you all as well, our folks, for the most part, have liked having two different due dates for the real estate and personal property. I mean, they really like that. Now, like I said, the craziness in between of why all that's happened has been another story, but people, you know, they really like that.
Yes, I think a lot of the stuff we can put behind us, let's get behind us and keep us updated on how that test bill and cycle goes in May. So we'd be interested in seeing how that goes because, as Mr. Cook said, and I've said several times, we can't go through another delay on trying to get tax tickets out.
I completely understand. I'm right there with you, Mr. Smith. I'm right there with you. But hopefully, everything will be okay. Because personal property, you know, we didn't have any hiccups other than the not being able to apply those credits, which were the veterans credits to vehicles. And some folks do qualify for the agent income credit, not owning a mobile home, by that being their residence. So, you know, few of those weren't too bad. Real estate is the big thing because when you have an entering, you know, 1,500, 2,000 adjustments, that can be a little time consuming. But hopefully, we're past those humps, and 2024 is going to be a better year on the tax bill. And then everybody will be fussed about it because both of their bills are due December 4th. So hopefully, we're going to be back to that point, hopefully.
Well, if we can get it back to that point, then we can go ahead and change it. But when it's a complete mess at the end of the year, there's not a whole lot we can do, do anything except pull our hair out. I don't have it.
I don't know how else to explain it, other a chaotic mess. I agree.
I just don't want people to forget about it.
It's one of those things we talk about, just with the changes of the Commissioner's office, just trying to let those folks get their voting before we make any major changes. Anyone have anything else?
Does anybody else have anything for Ms. Gwynn?
I don't.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner of Revenue, I don't see Mr. Linkus. Sheriff Foster's getting ready to go out of town, so we'll move into new business. We have the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I don't.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner of Revenue, I don't see Mr. Linkus. Sheriff Foster's getting ready to go out of town, so we'll move into new business. We have the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Any questions or discussion on the consent calendar? Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So approved. Next, we have the National Day of Prayer proclamation that was requested. Staff is prepared for the proclamation. I'll entertain a motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on the proclamation? All right, here and now, excuse me, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next, we have our fiscal year '25 budget calendar. We have a proposed revision. Mr. Baer, would you like to speak on that?
Yeah, that's, as we spoke of during the work session the other night, this is just a revision to the calendar. This is to move the, the advertisement that, to have the review on May 14th, instead of having a public hearing on May 14th, and have a public hearing on the budget on May 28th. As you are aware, the dates from the General Assembly and the Governor are getting back together, and not until May 13th or whatever it is. They probably will not have an answer. I am meeting with the school system tomorrow or Thursday to have a, a meeting to talk about how best to put together a budget in this uncertain times of the budget, and present to you all, I think we're gonna have to go ahead and advertise our budget as the best knowledge we've got, and then we'll just have to make changes come June 30th, depending upon what the General Assembly's action is. So I would just request you all approve this revision to the calendar.
Right. Entertain a motion to approve the revision as submitted.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Smith. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So approved. Next, we have the South Crest Drive Rural Edition Resolution. Mr. Baer, is this, is this yours?
Uh, this is the revenue sharing for the project, and Mr. Smith just needs to make a motion to proceed and send this be, be added to the state system.
So moved. So moved.
All right, you sure? Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Any questions or discussion on that? Right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
I will express appreciation to Ms. Shelton, and I think Mr. Kinsler, that have worked on getting the, the Platts and everything finalized for the right away there. So I know the residents will be excited to get this road construction started.
Oh, I, I about guarantee you that. Next, we have our Commonwealth Transportation Board. We have a public hearing in Bristol.
Information only, sir. If anybody would like to, to ride along, I am going to try to make it this year. It's always good to, to go down there and just meet with the Bristol District people and, and hear about their programs and the people from Richmond. If anybody'd like to ride along with me, let me know. We'll meet here and we will go down.
And that's on the sixth, the fourth?
Monday, May 6th, yes.
All right.
That does conflict with our planning commission meeting. We do have a public hearing at the Planning Commission that evening, so not all of us can go.
Is this before or after we have our public?
This is not our, we have our secondary six-year plan that is ours. This is not the secondary. This is the BDOT six-year plan. So this is where you see about the big projects in the district, and also the smart scale scores and things like that. You might be interested in attending, Mr. Morgan. I know that it's in all the projects that are out there, so I, I thought that you might be one that would at least want to go down there in the process.
Yeah, my name's Dan.
All right, anything else under new business, Mr. Baer?
Um, no, sir. I do not have anything else.
All right, we'll move on to staff reports, and as scared as I am to recognize him, because he came in carrying a box and something in the frame, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I was not here for the last meeting. I will make up for it this meeting.
You have three minutes.
How long did that last meeting take, Mr. Chairman?
Sixteen.
Sixteen minutes.
I can go longer than that.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying there's a correlation, but one could argue that that's a clue.
I will rush through this as quickly as I can, Mr. Chairman. First thing that I had is an action item. The Regional Improvement Commission, for audit purposes, requires all the localities to tell how they intend to use the funds that you'll get from the casino gaming tax. Last year, you authorized a resolution indicating that you intend to spend the entirety of, of the funds on public safety this year, and that has been our guidance moving forward. The expected revenue from that in fiscal year '25 is around $700,000 per each of the 14 localities. So I would ask that you authorize the resolution attached to indicate that you intend to spend the casino funds on public safety.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024-12.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that resolution? Right here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
The second action item, we've received a notification from the state that they've given us a shelter upgrade grant award. The, the intent and the application was to take some of our fire and rescue stations that don't have backup generators and be able to, you know, put generators there, so that if we have a small number of folks who need shelter somewhere to come warm up, charge their phones, that sort of thing, that they have somewhere to be able to do that. I believe this would get all of our fire and rescue departments having some sort of backup power. So this is a 60-40 matching grant, so 60% from the state, 40% from the county, the local sheriffs, $22,000, $124. We can bring you back an, an amendment appropriate resolution, or we can spend those funds out of carryover budget. It'll be a couple of months before we're doing that, so we, we can see your direction on how to, how to get those funds, but would recommend that you accept the award and authorize us to notify the state of such.
All right, entertain a motion to accept the, accept the award.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morgan. Any questions or discussion on that one? Right here and now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So approved.
The third item I have is Henley Mountain Electric. You know that we've just completed the public safety radio system. We put a new tower on Henley Mountain. We are currently operating on solar and wind with a backup generator, just in case those don't adequately charge the, the battery system. Mr. Chairman has asked that we look at getting pricing to do permanent power to that location, and we have a price from Appalachian Power to do so. There is an attachment. It's just over $40,000 is the cost to, to do that. It's approximately a mile of line. Most of it is direct buried electric line, but there will be some conduit toward the top where we have more rock, just to keep that line from getting cut. So if it's your pleasure to do so, we'll need a motion to authorize us to enter into an agreement with Appalachian Power to install that line at the, the cost offered. And we would suggest using carryover funds from the current fiscal year. They won't be able to start this project for about three months. So it will be fiscal year '25 when it gets started.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to authorize staff to move forward with the AEP estimate to establish permanent power at the Henley Mountain site.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on that one?
Mr. Hankins, is that your recommendation?
It is. We are still below where we would have been had we gone with this breaker roadside. The, the estimate for that over 20 years was $250,000. We are still below that. So we, we have much better signal from the Henley Mountain site than we would have had from Spraker Road. It's not ideal, it's not where I wanted to be, but it does get us permanent power there, and I think that provides us with a lot more security and safety at that site.
Thank you.
What becomes of the solar and the wind that you have up there now?
It'll continue to operate. We'll, we'll still use it to help charge the, the batteries and hopefully reduce our electric load up there.
All right, any other questions? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Next item is ambulance safes. As we've moved over to providing emergency services, there's a need for us to have safes in the, the ambulances, just to protect any drugs that may be there in the safe, or there in the ambulance, you know, if they were to be broken into. Sometimes when providers get out of the ambulance and they, they go, go into a scene, that gives someone the opportunity to try to break into the ambulance. This would provide us with more safety and security for our, our responders. Our consultant has, has done pricing. We'd like to verify that, that, that the pricing is correct, but would ask for your authorization to procure these narcotic safes for, for the ambulance, pending further review by the county administrator on the pricing.
All right, entertain a motion to approve Mr. Hankins' request on the ambulance safe.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Any questions or discussion on that recommendation?
Is 16,000 for all the ambulances?
Yes, sir. And I believe that includes the two that we, we have pending purchases on.
You know, can they move, I assume they can be moved from ambulance to ambulance, can't they?
They, they can, and these safes provide us on the management side with some additional reassurances too, because it's, it's all biometric, so we know who accessed the boxes, you know, when they did it. We, we can lock out folks if, if their employment is terminated, or if they leave our employment. So there, there's some, some inventory management that, that we'd like to make sure that we're getting right.
All right, does anybody else have any questions? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Next item is the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund ambulance purchase from the state. You've authorized emergency services to, to move forward with that purchase, and we did so based on the guidance from the state that we, we would be reassigned that grant that had originally been assigned to Rural Retreat Rescue Squad. Last week, the state came back and said, whoops, we can't do that. So there's only two options. One is for us not to get the money. The other is for Rural Retreat Rescue Squad to work with us to get that, that grant award sent to them, and then they give it to us. So we, we have agreement with Rural Retreat Rescue Squad to, to do so. One of the staff members who worked for Rural Retreat Rescue Squad and now works for us is going to handle that process, and so I, I don't think that it's gonna cause any major hiccups, it's just an inconvenience that the state's caused to us. So I just wanted to be aware of that because of your approval that you gave last time. Any questions about that?
Have, have you communicated that to the town? Because I know the town had questions about the Rescue Squad Board dissolving because of the way the lease was written on the property.
I saw that in their minutes. We're going to communicate with them that, and we had actually communicated with the Rescue Squad that they really need to be up and running for about six months after we take over.
Just because of loose ends.
That there's a lot of loose ends. They'll still be receiving reimbursements for their, their billings for about six months after the, the termination, so there are a lot of good reasons for that Rescue Squad Board to remain in place for another few months.
And I think, I think they're getting some, I think they're getting some guidance from Mr. Sobe, so I don't know if Mr. Farthing, if you need to reach out to Mr. Sobe and make sure they stay in existence. Yeah. And, and, and I understand, based on what I've read, I understand what Mr. Sobe's concerns are, the, the way that it's written, but I, I don't know that he knows our side of, of why we need him to stay up and running, so.
We'll, we'll communicate that.
The state can't come back later and say, okay, we gave this to Rural Retreat, they can't give it to somebody else.
We will want to have an agreement with them in, in writing before, you know, any of this transpires, so that we, we make sure that we're locked in, with, with the Rural Retreat Rescue Squad Board.
And, and it's very similar, like the lead mines Rescue Squad ones that we've gotten in the past, well, Rural Retreat as well, the grant, like lead mines would have come in through that grant. They've come in, but we have titled it in the name because of insurance.
Well, I was getting ready to say, in the past, like, before the, the county assumed responsibility, in the past, the ones Retreat got were titled in, to the town of Retreat. So I think, I don't know that there's ever been an issue with a, a nonprofit or, or fire and rescue agency receiving the vehicle grant and then titling it to a municipality because of insurance.
And we're paying a 20% share of it as well, so.
Yep, that's pretty standard.
Yep.
Under the additional, there is one item that I would ask that you address tonight. One of the reporting software pieces that we need is called ESO. It, it can be used by Rescue Squads, and it is the state's preferred provider for doing the reporting. So we get graded on that, so we, we've got to make sure that we are reporting to the state in a timely manner, using their, their system. The state used to pay part of the, the cost of doing this, but since they lost $50 million, that, that's changed. So we're, we're having to pay for the software. We, we just got pricing on this very late last week, after your packet had already gone out, and since it's three weeks until your, your next meeting, we would ask that you authorize staff to issue a check pending the approval of purchase order, or the requisition by the county administrator. The total amount is $12,954.80, and that includes significant setup fees for, for ESO, but once we're set up, that, that will go down to an annual maintenance contract. So would ask for your authorization to issue a manual check in that amount.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve Mr. Hankins' request.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Any questions or discussion? And just to clarify, the motion does include the issuance of the manual check.
Yes, sir.
All right, anybody else have anything? Right here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Just a couple of things to mention. When I left for vacation, I was, I was expecting a couple of packages in the office. Those packages did come in. We, we did receive the Ivanhoe Fire Department with County Emergency Services, and I all received recognitions from TITA, so I have the certificate here from the people for the ethical treatment of animals, if anyone's interested in taking a look at that. There was a little something along with that. I don't recommend it, so I didn't bring any of those. But my mom watches these meetings, and she, she did send something to, to serve as a memento for being able to, to rescue the bear. She included the chairman's nickname for the bear along with it. So as a crochet fan, she, she's given me something else to decorate my office with, and I thought you all would get a kick out of it.
Did she make that?
She did.
Wow.
Thanks, Mom.
That's cool.
That's my report, unless anyone has any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins?
Good, sir.
I don't have any questions, but number one, I feel like I should apologize to your mother for giving you a hard time at these meetings, so. I haven't got any hate mail. I haven't got a crochet bear either.
You haven't got any hate mail with me in two blocks.
Always, it's always interesting when the attorney chimes in.
Especially.
And on the radios, before I forget, I meant to tell you before the meeting, I had somebody report a dead spot on Foxden Road this morning. So if you'd have, check when he's out and about. It's off of, is it Old School Road?
It's in that area, yes.
Yeah. So just when he's out and about, if you'll check it.
We will. One of the things on the radios is we have not replaced the headsets for the 911 dispatchers. And some of the issues, there are some times when it seems like a transmission's not coming through. Part of that is an issue with the headsets. And so Ms. Grubbs is working on replacing the headsets for the dispatchers. We're also getting pricing on replacing the console equipment that's original to the 911 center and some of the furniture, some of the office chairs. You know, it's pretty well worn at this point. So we'll bring that back to you for pricing at a later point.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hankins. Move on to county administrator report. Mr. Bear?
I hope Martha's keeping score over there. I hope I don't cost you all as much as what Mr. Hankins just cost you. But I will comment, most of the things.
You got stuffed animals?
Most of the things, Mr. Hankins, what you talk about, they're fire and rescue related. And just like that resolution we passed earlier, we have got a lot of unspent funds from our Rescue Squad budget this year where we did not start operations until later. So we have plenty of money to cover these things. And so that's why there's not a lot of concern there and it's just the cost of getting set up. On my first item is bond council. I've received verbal approval from Rural Development for our trucks. Application is in, waiting to get the official approval, but would request your all's approval to execute the agreement with Spillman, Thomas &amp; Battle for bond council services.
Right. Entertain a motion to approve Spillman, Thomas &amp; Battle's bond council.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or concerns about that motion? Here and now will do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Next is just documenting for our own record to sewer easement across the Fort Chiswell, the Fort Chiswell. What do you call in the Landmines Rescue Squad building out there with market services east?
EMS East.
EMS East building, but basically runs up alongside the trailer park to serve the trailers up through there. Just request your all's approval of that easement agreement.
Entertain a motion to approve the easement agreement.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or concerns on that? Here and now will do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, as you all are aware, there's a With County Solar Project that's currently being constructed down in the Foster Falls area of the county. They are proposing to install a battery energy storage system there. It's approximately 10 to 12 acre site and will have a proposed power rating capacity of 52.2 megawatts. I would request that the board set a public hearing from May 14th, 2024. But, Mr. Chairman, I would request that you allow time for Ms. Jennifer Parks and she can introduce her crew to come for it from RWE and give you some information about this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board for the record. My name is Rob Beaman. I'm a Virginia Land Use Attorney for Chalk &amp; Pepper Law Firm. I'm here today on behalf of the With County Solar Project LLC. The principal entity, the parent entity of that is RWE Clean Energy. We have a couple of members of RWE or folks from RWE that are with us here this afternoon to help answer any questions y'all might have. But as Mr. Bear pointed out, RWE is in the process of developing With County Solar Project over here at Foster Falls. And that project is proceeding and hopefully construction will wrap up in the end of the year or by the end of the year. In conjunction with that project, RWE would like to construct a battery storage facility that would be within the footprint of that larger solar project, which is fair indicated to be about 10 to 12 acres within the larger footprint of the solar project. And of course, the purpose of the battery storage is to reserve energy and store energy on site when you release into the grid in the event there's a need that's caused by, you know, outages or extra high demand. And so they would like to construct that storage project, as I said, within the bounds of the solar project. In conjunction with the battery storage facility, we have proposed a siting agreement, have circulated the draft to the county administrator's office and the county attorney's office, which would do a couple of things. One, it would sort of set the parameters, the design, the operational parameters of the battery storage facility. It includes decommissional requirements, minimum setbacks, maximum height requirements, sort of operational criteria. Also, it requires us to enter into an emergency action plan with the county that the county approves of and a decommissioning plan that the county will have some surety that the project will be removed once its useful life is over. Additionally, in addition to sort of those operational or use criteria, there's a financial component contribution that RWE would contribute to the county to address things like items in the capital improvement plan, the kind of capital improvement plan that need additional investment and to offset any costs that are associated or impacts that are associated with the project itself. In terms of the fees that are proposed under the siting agreement, it's kind of twofold. One is the annual revenue share, which is required by the county ordinance. I know that the revenue share ordinance was passed a couple of years ago and recently amended to include a battery storage project. So the agreement does sort of reference the fact that this project would be subject to that revenue share ordinance. And then there's a separate lump sum payment, upfront lump sum payment payable in three parts in a total amount of about $1.15 million to address those sorts of items that I mentioned just a moment ago. But as Mr. Bear indicated, I think he's requested a public hearing on that siting agreement for next month. We wanted to be here with y'all today to give you just a brief sort of overview of what that siting agreement was and how it operates and then to answer any questions that y'all have this evening. Anyway, we do appreciate the opportunity to be here before y'all tonight and are being stand by for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? When you talk about the decommissioning.
Yes, sir.
What guarantees is accounting do we have that, you know, RWE's going to put, build the building? A year later, they sell it to company ABC. Another year after that, they sell it to EFG. And by the time it's ready to meet the commission, it's completely through three or four different companies and they just walk off and leave.
Yes, sir. The siting agreement would be binding on the successors and the signs of RWE. And additionally, as part of the decommissioning plan, we're obligated to put up full surety for the amount that it would cost to decommission the project. And that surety would be revisited every five years by county staff. You'd have to adjust the amount of the surety in the event that it need to be increased to handle any change in costs every year.
So even if it's sold, RWE is still responsible for it?
The surety would be in place and any successors and signs that operate that facility would remain responsible. That agreement would be binding.
Please.
Does anybody else have any questions? I don't have a question, just a comment. Looking through the packet that we received, the decommissioning part that Mr. Cook referenced. I don't know if anybody else had a chance to read through it, but it's probably one of the most thorough ones that I've seen. So I guess you learn from other people's mistakes or somebody has.
Yes, sir. As far as that.
All right. Does anybody else have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for coming and presenting and it's nice that you come before we have to make a decision if we do have any questions. So thank y'all for that.
Thank you for having us this evening.
Thank you.
And Mr. Bear?
May 14th.
Thank you. My mouse died, so I'm having to, old school it over here. All right. Entertain a motion to set the public hearing for the siting agreement for May the 14th, 2024. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
So approved. Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
So approved with one note.
Mr. Chairman, I will mention, they have offered, if anyone from staff or anyone wants to go down there and take a look at, they can arrange a site if you need to see where this is proposed to go. So just let us know and we'll work with them to get that arranged. Next item is chairman's budget amendment request. You all have approved Mount Rogers Health Department application. And as we talked about, it was a pain for one mobile unit out of the opioid funds. Would request your all's amendment and approval of amendment and appropriation as requested by Ms. Woods.
Right. Entertain a motion to approve your request as presented by Ms. Woods.
Sorry, I'm trying to get there.
I was about to say, we voted to.
Yeah, y'all voted to.
I know we didn't say how we were going to come up with the money.
I'll second.
All right. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. A second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion on that motion?
And I will comment, in Ms. Gwen's report, I think it's $165,000 in the opioid fund. So we have ample funds there and plus there are four or five payments that came in this week or supposed to come in this week, so. 15. So anyway, we have ample funds.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved.
And last thing, Mr. Chairman, I would request that the board approve the waiving of the permit fees for the New River Regional Water Authority plant since we are part owners of that plant.
Right. Entertain a motion to waive the building permit and land disturbing permit fees for the New River Regional Water Authority expansion. So have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved. Anything else, Mr. Bear?
Rest are just informational, sir.
All right. We'll move on to county attorney. Mr. Farthing, do you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have anything at this time.
All right. Move on to board reports. We have the Water and Wastewater Committee.
Yes, sir, Chairman. The water committee met on April 18th, 2024 and has four recommendations. One is approving change order number four for the Max Meadows Collection System Improvements Project.
Right. Coming from committee, it doesn't require a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none will do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Second item is amending and appropriating $15,000 to 4403-460603 to cover half the bore costs for two building sites, one on East Lee Highway and one on Ivanhoe Road. These expenses are contingent upon Mr. Hughes agreeing to pay his portion and Mr. Dumpford agreeing to provide a sewer lateral easement for the two remaining lots this line would serve.
Right. Again, it doesn't require a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation?
Just a minor correction, it's 4402, not 4403, Mr. Chairman, but that's all.
Right. Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none will do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Third item is approving updates to the water contract to include the $75 connection fee for an existing water service and a $75 reconnection fee for disconnected services. The fees are already acquired, but needed clarification in the contract.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on that recommendation? Hearing none will do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Fourth item is approving the proposed application and fee structure for the fats, oil and grease pretreatment program.
Any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else from the Water and Wastewater Committee?
No, Chairman, I'm not.
All right. We'll move on to board supervisors time. Mr. Terry, we'll start with you.
Nothing at this time, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
Nothing at this time. Thanks.
Mr. Smith?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman. I said everything, Mr. Bear.
Mr. Cook?
Mr. Terry, I just wanted to thank you for the process you went through out of the green boxes out there. The two attendants that they've had, they have out on 52 now are both excellent.
Yes.
I mean, they both come try to take your trash out of your truck for you. They're very friendly, complete change. I mean, it's enjoyable to take the trash off now.
Much better. Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have. Ms. Lawson?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Burnett?
I just wanted to thank the Burn Springs Ruralington Club for coming out tonight and that they're very motivated on the community center. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. I've got a couple of things. Number one, the National Day of Prayer may be a second at 12 o'clock at the Presbyterian Church here in Whitfield on Church Street. If you can attend, apparently it's going to be a countywide event because the town of Retreats decided to not have their own National Day of Prayer celebration. So all the localities will be involved. And the second thing is, Martha, can I get a hard copy of this meeting? Because Mr. Smith's not having something to say and Mr. Cook thinking, Mr. Terry, I just, you know, just for my personal archives. But that's all I have. All right. Next item on the agenda is a closed meeting under 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia to discuss the personnel policy. Entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none will do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved and will now be in a closed session. Make a motion to come out of closed session. Have a motion, have a motion by Mr. Cook and a second by Mr. Smith to come out of closed session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now back in open session, on record, Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification.
Yes, sir. Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this state pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Info Act. And whereas Section 2.3-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge on the public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And on the such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in this closed meeting or heard discussed and are considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. And I'll make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 All right.
So approved. All right. Open the floor up for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Authorize the payments and amend and appropriate $6,723 for the sick leave.
That's it. I'll second that.
Right. Have a motion by Mr. Morgan, second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none will do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else to come before the board? Mr. Bear?
The recess date is my recommendation, if that works with everyone else's schedule. That's the. that's the only thing.
What time?
What's good for you, five, five thirty-six?
Five. What day is this?
May seventh.
Flexible.
I mean, as early as possible.
We've got, just so the people that are here, we have a budget committee at four, so provided we still have items to take up with it. But we have buildings and grounds at three, we have budget at four, and this will be after that, so at least three of you will probably be around here anyway, so.
May seventh.
May seventh, yes.
This is a budget meeting?
Yes.
What time, five?
Five.
Anything else, Mr. Bear?
No, sir.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Collins? Mr. Farthing?
Yes, sir.
All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to recess until May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, five P M. So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Morgan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So approved, and we'll be in recess.